It is. Don't do that. That's Phil's job. Well, I mean, you almost have to because of the travel. Yeah, I mean, you're killed at least two days traveling. Four days, I'm ready to come home. Four days, five days maybe. Well, he's rich, so. He's rich. Tell him I said that. Good for them.
Yes.
Welcome to the April 21st, 2022, Northampton County Council. Mr. Giovanni, will you please lead us in the pledge? To the body of the United States of America and to the Republic from which
To the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living in justice for all.
He's a Navy guy. He gonna jump in. We have Mr. Myers available by phone. Ms. Chafniski, will you call the roll?
Mr. Brown. Mr. Cusick?
Present.
Mr. Giovanni?
Present.
Mr. Gofredo?
Here.
Mr. Heckman? Mr. Lot?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Ms. Serinski?
Here.
Eight present with Mr. Heckman absent.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 7th, 2022?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Courtesy of the floor, we have one person signed in. Mr. Roger Gilbert, could you come down and state your address and you get five minutes to speak, sir?
Thank you. My name is Roger Gilbert. My address is 3310 Clifton Avenue, Bethlehem Township, PA. And the reason I'm here is because there've been some articles in the paper and things about election integrity, and I'm just wondering what's been done in terms of security. Mr. Lamont McClure spoke basically during the Special Committee on Election Integrity back in March of 2021. And basically, he said, "The bipartisan committee is continuing its comprehensive review of the 2020 election with a focus on receiving input from state and local officials." And what I wanted to know was, has anything been done? And also, very lately, the Lehigh DA has found multiple ballots deposited in hundreds of instances. And that's election integrity. And if we don't have any integrity, if we don't believe in the election that's true, you know, what good is it? We don't have a country here. So basically, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it said, "Based upon the investigation, I have found that there were likely hundreds of instances where people deposited more than one ballot into Dropbox as established for receipt of ballots between October 18th and Election Day, November 2nd." And basically, I just really would like to know what's been done. I know this was Lehigh County, but if it happened there, I'm sure it happened in this county. And I want to know whether you're aware of it, whether you've done anything about it, looked at it to prevent this from happening again, since one election is coming up soon and another one in the fall. And they are both very important. So that's my question to the committee here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, over.
Anyone else need to speak to, courtesy of the floor this evening? Okay. Mr. McClure, do you have a report for us?
COVID-19 wasn't just the worst health crisis to hit the country and the world in 100 years. It was also an economic disaster, and it was specifically an economic disaster for small businesses. And one of the things we realized immediately when we received the CARES Act funding and the buckets for which we could put this money in, we realized that propping up our small businesses right from the very beginning of the receipt of the CARES Act money was going to make all the difference in the world, not just at the time, but moving through the pandemic and then after, the whole survive and thrive, which is what we did. And tonight, you will be considering the last of the small business grants from this program. And should you pass it, which I encourage you to unanimously do so, it will be the last grants, small business grants, absent some sea change that I do not foresee, that we will suggest to you. We are going to move forward into the future. We have dynamic and important plans to bring to you in the very near future regarding saving Gracemont, regarding enhancing and improving our 911 system, regarding the affordable housing crisis, and working with some dynamic and innovative developers to develop affordable housing. So we're going to have many important suggestions to you moving forward with respect to our second ARP payment. But we will not be suggesting any more small business grant funding. With that in mind, it's important for us, one of our jobs, in addition to taking action and being aggressive in saving businesses, is to bear witness to what has happened, where we've been, and what we've done. And I think it's very important, for the record, to outline for you and for our public what we have done. Under the CARES Act, with respect to our Small Business Protection Plan, we funded 765 businesses to the tune of $10,190,305.91. ARP to date, 1,118 businesses funded to the tune of $14,659,255.62. This includes a $300,000 allocation from the Chamber of Commerce. The pending list you have before you tonight, 60 businesses for a total of $715,370.25. Grand total plus the pending list of businesses, almost 2,000 businesses. 1,943 businesses funded. The total amount will be $25,564,931.78. Of the 1,943 businesses, 322 received two grants.
How many?
322. So we talk about numbers, and numbers are important, and I'm going to go through some numbers toward the balance of my presentation on this very important program that is coming to an end tonight. But I think it's important that you know and that our public knows the very real impact that these programs have had. From September 15th, 2020, from Joe's Tavern, to say these past few months have been difficult is a vast understatement. The financial support from Northampton County Small Business Relief Fund and your economic leadership in helping small businesses survive has shined a very bright light to what was inevitably the worst year in our 60-year history. October 29th, 2020, from Peace Fuel Nutrition LLC, "This grant is a business lifesaver during these difficult COVID-19 times, as we can now purchase much-needed and depleted inventory and supplies, pay a part-time worker, and catch up on back orders pending because of depleted inventory." August 26th, 2020, "I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank you and Northampton County government for the grant award we received in today's mail. The current health crisis has changed our world in many ways, but it's refreshing to know that people in public service like you and members of county council still recognize the needs of your citizenry and act decisively to make things better." That was from the Nazareth Army Navy Store. November 3rd, 2020, "I want to sincerely thank you for this support. As we were considering moving in the direction of closing our establishment, your consideration and help has allowed us to remain open." This was from Bikram Yoga in Bethlehem. From the Ice Cream Lounge, "I'm just writing this email to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We applied for so much help and didn't get a response from anyone. So when we received this in the mail, we were so thankful. We, as a small business in the community, appreciate the kindness you have shown to us. Being a new business and with the pandemic hitting us this year, it has been truly a struggle for us and many of the small businesses in the area. We really, truly appreciate the help. May you and your family have a wonderful and safe holiday. Hope to meet you soon. December 9th, 2020. As a woman and minority-owned business, we are so very grateful for the support to navigate the unique challenges of this pandemic. While we are all experiencing stressors at this time, assistance from our community gives us the hope and courage to continue to move forward. I'm literally writing this email in tears. I opened my mail today to find a check for the COVID relief via your office. This is nothing less than a godsend. Being a small business open for the last two years, we have struggled to compete with larger regional change. As a franchisee, I have gone weeks without paying myself simply to cover my team member payroll. Simply to cover my team member payroll. I just want to express my sincere appreciation for my grant check that I received today, 1/7/2021. You have no idea how much I needed this money to try and keep my business thriving. I've been in business for 20 years. I started my business in January 2001. I have, in all caps, never applied for a grant or any free money from the government." January 13th, 2021, "I have been trying to find the words to express how appreciative I am after receiving the grant from Northampton County Council. However, nothing seems sufficient." November 2nd, 2021, "I'm writing to express my sincere gratitude to you, the Northampton County Council, and the people of Northampton County for this gracious business support. As like other businesses, our business went through significant turmoil last year, and we would not have survived had it not been for the support of this one. Rock and Rameli is grateful to have received financial assistance during the pandemic through the Small Business Assistant Grant Program. The money helped us retain our part-time staff, who are also financially troubled by the pandemic. Allowing them to remain on our payroll alleviated some of their worries and helped support their families as well." And it goes on and on and on. I mean, real people, right? Real people. So, some of the numbers. Allen Township. Businesses in Allen Township received $223,000 in this grant program. Businesses in Bangor Borough, a quarter of a million dollars. Bath Borough, $216,000. Businesses in the city of Bethlehem, $2,745,159.28. In Bethlehem Township, $662,000. Bushkill Township, $417,000. Businesses in Bushkill Township receive. Chapman Borough, $15,000. East...
I know, Coach Chapman, huh?
East Allen Township, $300,000. East Bangor Borough, $10,000. Easton, $12,279,999. Forks Township, $502,000. Freemansburg Borough, $31,000. Hanover Township, $392,000. Heller Town Borough, $519,000. Lehigh Township, $329,000. Lower Mount Bethel, $88,000. Lower Nazareth, $506,000. Lower Salkin Township, $556,000. Moore Township, $475,000. Nazareth Borough, $500,000. North Catasauqua Borough, $99,000. North Hampton Borough, $500,000. Palmer Township, $788,000. Penordale, $256,000. Plainfield, $310,000. Portland, $17,000. Rosetta, $82,000. Stalker Town, $55,000. Tatumie, $52,000. Upper Mount Bethel, $234,000. Upper Nazareth, $357,000. Walnut Port, $65,000. Washington Township, $277,000. And West Easton Borough, $58,000. Williams Township, $213,000. There's businesses down there. Wilson Borough, $313,000. And Wind Gap Borough, $189,000. So, as you bring the program to an end tonight, those are the key numbers that you need to know, as well as the words, the heartfelt words from the people who we have helped survive this pandemic. As you know, small business is the backbone of Northampton County's economy. And I would be remiss if I did not thank the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce. You know, Mr. Ianelli is here at my invitation tonight. Is he still here? Did he run out? And when I called him to suggest that we do this, he was, he was, he just said yes. He didn't have to think about it. He, and it was a brave thing to do because, you know, there was potential there for criticism. And less than 45% of the grant recipients, by the way, are chamber members. So a majority of the grant recipients throughout this program are non-chamber members, which I also think is a credit to Mr. Ianelli. But he had the vision to understand what it was we were trying to do. And because he had the courage to move forward and make the people available to us to get this done, we got it done. The numbers that affected the lives that I have read to you about tonight were because the chamber partnered with us to help us get that word out and to help us do the actual work, the heavy lifting. So I can't thank Mr. Ianelli enough. And of course, we all know Jess O'Donnell. Jess worked like a demon to make sure that this program was successful. She, Jess O'Donnell, would not let this program fail. And as far as I'm concerned, Northampton County is forever grateful to her. And I would be, I would be mistaken if I did not also acknowledge Brittany Keel and Ashley Laura, who also helped Jess through this process. They have been fantastic. And our own folks, the folks at DCD, Tina, just a tremendous job. Steve Barron, our Director of Fiscal Affairs, they poured their hearts and souls into this. Rebecca Sanchez, who kept them, you know, on the straight and narrow. She also deserves a great deal of credit for how we, how we got through this. But tonight ends the, tonight ends the program. But I think what you will see is that this program will have a lasting effect on our economy. It will have a lasting effect on our quality of life. And it was replicated in Lehigh County with the assistance of the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce, which means the program that we came up with led to $50 million being invested into small businesses in the Lehigh Valley, and that is something we should all be very proud of. And I'd just like to ask Mr. Ianelli if he has anything he'd like to say to the commissioners of county council tonight.
Well, Lamont took my whole speech. But anyway, but I do want to say one thing, all kidding aside, and thank you. It, we were so blessed and so fortunate to do this, and I know there's a million things you could use this money for and still are. So I just want to thank you, and I want to thank Lamont and Tina so much for, for all the help. And as Lamont said, it was his idea. He called me and, you know, really quickly, the genesis when, when, of all this is when COVID started, we took, I called my, we took in all, almost a quarter million dollars of our own money and, and put it out. And there were nothing like the grants you did. We started with $1,000 and $1,500 grants. But it was like the first week, I said, "I want to get it out." And my staffer, like, "Are you insane?" You know, "We don't know where the economy's going. We're going to maybe need this money." But we, we felt it was the members, and we, and we did that. So we had, with Jessica and Brittany Keel and, and Ashley, we had a lot of practice because they were good at this. One, once, the second time we did it, they were literally Christmas Eve on the phone taking calls. And if you know Jess, she was doing it 24/7. So I don't want to blab your, a lot of stuff to do. I just want to say thank, first of all, I want to say thank you for what you do. I was thinking, I was sitting, you know, the amount of years thankfully I've been at the chamber and how many different faces I've seen. So thank you for what you do. I appreciate it. And thank you for letting us do it. And as Lamont said, I've been in the restaurants and the businesses and seen people, you know, break down that were going to close or couldn't stay open or... And, and still today, it's a little bit of, you know, can't find employees, it's a little bit of supply chain issues. It's, so there's still uncertainty. But you made a lot of people happy and saved a lot of families, a lot of businesses. And again, I just want to thank you because, again, there are so many needs, and we get that. So thanks so much.
Are there any questions for Mr. McClure? Mr. Cusick?
Wonderful presentation. One of the things that I wanted to bring up somewhat relates to the question that the gentleman earlier raised. Where are we with the hiring of an election registrar?
We're in the process. I just had a good conversation with Ms. Hess, who, as you know, is the acting registrar now and who has served in that role before very ably. And I asked her if she had an issue with us being deliberate in the process because we want to find the right person, want to find the right character. I mean, that, that's most important to me, to find a high-character person. And we want, if we can, find someone who has some tangential relationship to the performance of elections, which we're finding to be a bit of a challenge. So we're taking our time. We want to make sure we get it right, as opposed to just filling the position.
I guess then the next...
Several, several rounds of interviews have taken place, if that answers your specific question.
Will someone be in place prior to, what is it, May 17?
No. No, and, and if you think about it, Ms. Hess will have to do a significant amount of training. You know, here's the light switch, those are the, there are the restrooms, and I'm only partially kidding, right? And right now, Ms. Hess and everyone on the staff, right now, they're filling, they're stuffing the ballots so they can send them out to the voters. That's what they're doing right now. So Ms. Hess wouldn't have any time, and she expressed this to me, actually, to do any of the important training. So it actually would be, at this juncture, a detriment to fill the position before the May primary.
Then are we paying her in the acting role?
Yes.
Thank you.
On top of the stepping crease you gave her last fall, last winter.
Any other questions for Mr. McClure?
Thank you.
We'll move into old business. Is there any old business to discuss? Hearing seeing none, we'll move into new business. Tonight will be, first, considering the executive's appointment and reappointments to Northampton County Housing Authority and the Workforce Board, Lehigh Valley. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce the resolution?
Yes. Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment, reappointments, as indicated hereafter. Northampton County Housing Authority, appointment Leonard Scott Parsons, 225 Alpha Avenue, Wind Gap, PA, term to expire 2/9/24.
You can keep going. You could read the whole.
Workfor, Workforce Board, Lehigh Valley, reappointment. Business category Kurt Landis, 4581 Willow Lane, Nazareth, PA, and his term to expire is 6/30/25. Workforce B category Lisa Nesbit, 4201 Bethman Road, Easton, PA, and her term also 6/30/25.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding these appointments, as we discussed at Personnel yesterday? What's B4 category? What is that? Is it okay?
Is that a workforce board?
Yes, sir.
They have very specific criteria for the appointees to the board. I'm not conversant with them specifically, but we can get that for you.
But she fits the need.
She does.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Serinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of personnel requests, Department of Court Services Criminal Division Resolution. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one part-time position for clerical technician 2, pay grade CR-13-1A, salary of $13,600, shall be eliminated in the Department of Court Services Criminal Division, effective April 22, 2022. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one part-time position of clerical technician 3, pay, pay grade CR-15-1A, salary $14,913, shall be eliminated in the Department of Court Services Criminal Division, effective April 2010, 2022. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that their one full-time position of clerical technician 3, pay grade CR-15-1A, salary $29,825, be created in the Department of Court Services Criminal Division, effective April 22, 2022.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding this matter? I have a comment. I am going to vote for this, but I did have a concern yesterday when we read it, and we did break down the math, and it's still a position that's under $15 an hour. And I think a lot of us state that we believe in a fair wage, and we believe that's a fair wage. And I'm not going to say no because I know they need to fill this position. But I think at some point, we need to take a look at how are we going to start raising the salaries of our own. So I'm hoping that that will be reflected in this year's budget because this is still underneath. And I took a look at the salaries, and there's so many positions that are well, well below that number. So I did have a concern with that. Is there any other discussion or comment? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Serinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of an update to the Northampton County Depositories Resolution. Mr. Cusick, will you introduce this?
Certainly. Whereas Northampton County Administrative Code, Section 12.06A, Depositories of Funds of the County provides that the county council, after the evaluation of written proposals, shall by resolution select a depository or depositories for county monies. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following shall constitute the current and updated listing of county authorized depositories. Sections marked with bold underlining have been added, sections marked with strikeouts have been deleted, effective this 22nd day of April, 2022. Number one is Bank of America. Number two, Bank of New York Mellon. Number three is Embassy Bank. Number four, ESSA Bank and Trust. Number five, Fifth Third Bank. Number six, First Commonwealth Federal Credit Union. Number seven, Fulton Bank. Number eight, Fulton Financial Advisors. Number nine, JP Morgan Chase Bank. Number 10, Key Bank. Number 11, M&amp;T Bank. Number 12, Merchants Bank of Bangor. Number 13, PNC Bank. Number 14, San Tander Bank. Number 15, TD Bank. Number 16, Truist Bank. Number 17, Wayne Bank. Number 18, Wells Fargo Bank. Number 19, Zion Bank. Be it further resolved that any resolution or any part thereof conflicting with the provisions of this resolution is hereby repealed insofar as the same affects this resolution or is inconsistent with this resolution. So introduced, and now it's my understanding that there is an amendment to be made?
Yes. Do you need me to make the amendment?
You can make the motion.
I'll make a motion to amend number 12, striking Merchants Bank of Bangor and replacing it with Fidelity. We were informed that it had a name change, and it has been changed to Fidelity. So it's the same institution.
I'll second the amendment.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Vote on the amendment?
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Now we'll vote and discuss the amended resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Call for the vote.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the consideration of small business grants via the American Rescue Plan Resolution. Mr. Lot, will you read the resolution?
Sure will. Whereas on March 11, 2021, the American Rescue Plan of Act 2021 was signed into law and is intended to combat the COVID-19 pandemic, including the public health and economic impacts. And whereas Northampton County was awarded an allocation of approximately $30 million of American Recovery Plan funding to spend on various relief efforts. And whereas the Grant Review Committee comprised the Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development, Staff and County Administration convened to review and make funding recommendations. The recommendations totaling $715,370.25 for 60 projects are attached hereto and made a part hereof Exhibit A. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the county of the county... Excuse me. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the council of the county of Northampton, one, that the recommended grants in Exhibit A are approved. That the county executive of the county of Northampton is authorized to execute any and all necessary grant agreements with the applicants not to exceed the approved amount for each grant. So introduced.
Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns? Call for the vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of acceptance of a donation for emergency management resolution. Mr. Gafredo, will you please introduce this resolution?
Whereas Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 202, provides that county council shall have, among others, the following powers, to accept on behalf of the county any gifts of real property and to provide for the acceptance by any agency on behalf of the county of other gifts. And whereas Uzi Unisem USA, a global corporation, would like to donate $20,000 to Northampton County Emergency Management Services. Now therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council that does hereby accept the donation of $20,000 on behalf of Northampton County Emergency Management.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? Call for the vote.
I have... Oh, yes, ma'am. Yeah. I just want to say that in light of our discussion at the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee with Uzi Unisem and them delivering their DEP responses, I'm very grateful that they are duplicating the backup system so that the Bushkill Creek will not be, hopefully, not experience any other dewatering events. But as this is still ongoing, I'm gonna recuse myself and abstain from this vote.
Okay. Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Abstain.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Passes... Sorry, adopted by a vote of seven to zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of acceptance of a donation for Children, Youth, and Families Resolution. The Lehigh Valley Phantoms Professionalized Hockey Franchise wishes to honor first responders, including the Northampton County Children, Youth, and Families staff. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby accept the donation of 20 game tickets to allow CYF staff to attend a future game. Are there any questions or discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of a memorandum of agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture regarding weights and measures resolution. Mr. Gafredo, will you introduce the resolution?
Whereas Northampton County Charter, Section 202, provides that the county council shall have the power to approve in collective bargaining agreements with officers and employees. And whereas on April 5, 2022, county council received an agreement between Northampton County and the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture regarding weights and measures. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the agreement shall be approved this 21st day of April 2022.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, it just occurred to me. What exactly does this have to do with collective bargaining agreements? In the first whereas paragraph? I'm reading through this and I... I mean, it's an agreement, but is it a collective bargaining agreement? I guess my question then is what is the relevance of that first whereas paragraph that makes reference to a collective bargaining agreement?
Go to you.
Recognizing those comments, it might be appropriate for an amendment to the resolution to take out the first paragraph.
Would you like to do so?
Okay, so at this time then, I would like to make a motion to strike the first paragraph from the resolution.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for a vote in the amendment?
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amended resolution? Call for the vote.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of Administrative Code, Article 13 Contract, Wrench Tech, Alex's Tire Center, Inc., Jeff's Automotive, and Koch 33 Ford. Mr. Brown, will you introduce the resolution?
Whereas Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 13 Procurement and Disposition of County Property, Section 13.15 Contracts and Agreements, Section C1, requires approval of county council for any contract exceeding $100,000, which was awarded using the competitive bid negotiation, negotiation after competitive sealed bidding, and non-competitive negotiation source selection methods. For contracts with renewal clauses, the entire potential payout, if all renewal clauses are exercised under the terms of the contract, must be considered when determining if council approval is necessary. And whereas on April 8, 2022, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution approving a contract with the estimated cost to be determined by actual services rendered as per rate sheets included in contracts with Rentech, Alex's Tire Center, Inc., Jeff's Automotive, and Koch 33 Ford over three years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with the above-mentioned vendors.
Discussed yesterday at Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have discussion regarding sending a letter in support of PACA regarding increased funding to long-term care facilities. Counties were asked, who are operating county-owned long-term care facilities, to send a letter requesting an increase in medical assistance funding. So, I have drafted one. I will read it if I so can. "To state representatives and senators, dear so-and-so, we are writing to you today as representatives of only 17 counties that operate a county-owned long-term care facility and on behalf of Pennsylvania Coalition of Affiliated Healthcare and Living Communities. As an introduction, PACA is an affiliate of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. PACA members care for one of the most vulnerable populations, long-term care residents. County long-term care facilities have been the safety net for many counties in Pennsylvania, delivering a level of access to care that other facilities may not provide. This is even more so in the current environment. As many non-PACA facilities struggle to provide care, PACA's county facility members have risen to the occasion, providing the same level of support and care that Pennsylvania residents have come to expect. This is especially true for Medicaid residents who lack the resources for care that others may have. The counties are always the provider of last resort. County facilities receive the brunt end of shortfalls in funding due to many patients being Medicaid recipients. Unfortunately, while injections of temporary aid have helped, long-term care facilities have consistently faced stagnant medical assistance reimbursement rates that have led to a vast degree of underfunding. In fact, a recent study conducted by RK LLP showed that the current average cost for care of long-term residents was $339.97 per day, while the average Medicaid/MA reimbursement for a long-term resident per day is $253.71. This equates to a funding gap for nursing facilities statewide totaling $1,164,780,000, or $86.26 per resident day. Using these numbers, Governor Wolf's request of $91.25 million does not even equate to 15% of what long-term care facilities need to close the funding gap. Without a significant increase in MA funding for long-term care, many facilities will begin limiting intake of new residents, removing beds, or shutting down, leaving residents with no choice but to be moved away from their home or to be cared for by a loved one who is ill-equipped to do so. We are writing to encourage your support for an increase in the state budget of $294 million from MA funding for long-term care facilities. This number, when including the federal match, would equate to roughly 50% of the funds needed to meet the cost of care for long-term care residents. Without an increase of this nature, many facilities will continue to run at a shortfall, which will ultimately collapse the long-term care community. The Department of Human Services has stated that they have supported the long-term care community with funding through COVID-19 pandemic. While this is technically true, it is important to remember that this funding was provided through several COVID-19 pandemic measures, including the CARES Act and Act 24 funds. These funds were for a limited period and in no way related to the long-term viability of MA rates in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Let us be clear, DHS did not provide any increase in MA funding over the last two and a half years that was not directly related to federal action and specifically for extra costs of care due to COVID-19, for example, PPE and infection control. For this reason, we ask that you support the proposal of a $294 million increase for MA funding so that long-term care facility funding can return to a path of sustainability. While we continue to fight for our residents and staff, we thank you for your attention to long-term care during this time. We hope you will consider our comments as they work to support our long-term care facilities, their staff, and their residents. Sincerely, me and us." So, I ask for any comments or to have a discussion about whether we could send this because I would not send this without your approval.
Don't we have to approve it by resolution? Or can we just approve?
Well, I need a motion to send the letter. So, I guess I'm asking for a motion to send the letter.
I'll make a motion to send the letter.
Would I have a second, please?
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes.
I think that this letter is spot-on. And I think over the years, the state has continually looked at ways to plug the holes, whether it was using CARES Act money, or was it Act 24? Or in our case, the IGT. So, this is something that they need to do in order to sustain nursing homes. It's that simple. The Medicaid reimbursement rate has remained flat for way too long. I mean, we're not even talking about being anywhere close to the inflation rate, even in the past. So, I think right now, we're also looking at, what I believe, our unfunded mandates, potentially having to raise the number of PPD hours, some of the CMA requirements with regards to the number of patients in a room. And this isn't just Gracemonte. This is every nursing home in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So, an increase is sorely needed, and I wholeheartedly support your effort. And I would just make a request that we also send a copy to CCAP along the way as well. Thank you.
Any other question or discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero... I'm sorry. The motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss? Nope. Hearing none. Council committee reports.
So, the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee met today, this afternoon, and we reviewed the Mincy Lake corridor plan with file plan presentation. And it is an amazing... An amazing plan that encompasses various parts of Mincy Lake in terms of vernal pools and the wildlife that is protecting and even Jerry Seifried's Bear Swamp archery park. And so, this is a really important plan for us. Eventually, it's going to get adopted after it goes through its final reviews. Eventually, it's going to get adopted after it goes through its final reviews. They're still taking comments. We also reviewed Boozie Unisem's DEP responses to their comments. I'm very happy that our Carstgeology Advisory Council has been somewhat successful in holding Boozie Unisem accountable, and they will be putting in electric generating backup systems to make sure that the Bushkill Creek does not have another dewatering event. And I think that's a great win for the environment on the eve of Earth Day. And I'm very excited about that. There are some exciting Earth Day happenings tomorrow at Wayne Group Park at 9 o'clock at the Pavilion One, using the south side entrance. There will be tree plantings until 12 o'clock. Volunteers are welcome to join that. There is also an art show at Bangor High School that shows off and showcases Mincy Lake. That's on Saturday from 5 to 7. And then on Arbor Day, there is 3,800 native plugs are going to be planted at Louise Moore Park. So I'm really proud of our Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee and all the sub-communities, including the Carstgeology and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council. And I just want to say, they're doing an excellent job, and we owe Nate Pritchard, Sherry Acevedo, and Brian Coop, and I also want to mention John Bowser, who is a treasure to our county.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I just want to step in for a second. To Ms. Zirinsky, there is a tree that fell in Louise Moore Park that is dedicated. Is that going to be replanted?
You know what? A tree falls in the woods, and no one's, no, I'm kidding. No, literally, we're gonna get right on that, and I'm gonna talk to Brian Coop tomorrow. Don't you worry.
Well, no, because I happened to see it, and it had to be dedicated to somebody, so that's the only reason why I.
I think it's important that we have trees that are dedicated for a purpose, to be replaced or restored if able to, and so I will alert Brian Coop and tell him that that is the case, and make sure that that's taken care of and that the family who sponsored that dedication is informed. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. And I just want to inform members of council, the reason why I'm not here, I've been with my son, who had a little setback, but he's on the road to recovery right now, and it's a, I appreciate everybody's support, and I'd like to be there, but you know, sometimes family's more important.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. You know, our hopes and prayers go out to your son.
Thank you.
Yesterday, the Personnel and Finance Committees met, and the fruits of our labors were conducted this evening. But I do want to take time since it is the final evening to again thank Tina Smith and her staff, and sing Rebecca Sanchez praises one more time for all the diligence that she gave, as well as Mr. Ionelli's staff. It was a pleasure to work with them, all the members of council who stepped up at one time or another to be part of it and asked all the questions. It was a great experience to be part of that committee. So thank you again, everybody, for all the work that you did. And that's it. Any other committee reports? Council Liaison Reports?
The Farm Land Preservation Board did not meet last Tuesday. They will meet again in May in person.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Any council clerk report?
None.
Solicitor report?
Nothing.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?